This meeting of the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Let us stand for the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to do the business of this town and the community and all the people that we affect beyond our borders. Thank you for the beautiful weather. The spring day is encouraging and we know it's a promise of things to come. We thank you for these beautiful children, may I say, who are here before us, who've come to be recognized for their achievements and we wish them well and we ask for your blessings on all of them. We pray for your blessings in everyone here and all the endeavors that we serve you in the way that you would be most pleased. We thank you, Father, for all the blessings that we have every day and sometimes we take them for granted, but we do not mean to do that. We pray for comfort to those who've lost people in their lives, either friends or to life everlasting. We pray for your blessings. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Rick, we've just begun. We have before us on our agenda, we have called the meeting to order. We've had the invocation, the pledge. We're now on Roman numeral four, appointment of the new interim clerk, Amanda Beheller. Am I saying that correct, Amanda? Beheller? Okay, I'm sorry. So is, do we have a resolution for her, ready for her? Okay. Well, can we have an official motion to appoint her and we will take up the resolution at the next meeting, please?
I'll make that motion.
The motion is made by Laura to appoint Amanda Beheller as our new interim clerk. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And Rick makes the second. Is there any discussion to this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote. Susan, would you please do that in the interest of not having Ms. Beheller take her own motion?
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Amanda, thank you very much for coming to be with us on this interim basis. We wish you well and anytime we can be of assistance and not interference with the clerk, we will be happy to do that. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have additions and deletions or deletions to the agenda. Before you, you have an agenda and so does everyone have the agenda in front of them? Are there any additions or deletions? I have one thing I would like to add. I emailed Ron and Mike today and asked that when we go into executive session for, let me tell you which one it is, Roman numeral seven D, that the wording be specific as to what boards we are talking about and please be added, that it should be added. Under seven D, we'll be making appointments potentially to the planning commission, the rec commission, the IDA and any other appropriate boards that are named at that time. Thank you. Please make such a note.
And Mayor, just so everybody's aware, if there's an appointment, that will be done in open session.
Yes. The discussion is in executive session and the appointment is in open session so that we can do the people's business in front of the people. Thank you. Are there any other additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda? There being none, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Jan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura makes the second. Is there any discussion on approval of the agenda as amended? There being no discussion, I would ask a roll call vote. Please, Amanda. Thank you.
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have recognition of the RHS Wrestling Team and the Richlands Wrestling Club for the year 2022-2023 season. So it is my pleasure, my distinct pleasure and honor to recognize all these students and their coaches and their support staff. Words are inadequate to tell you how highly we all think of you and your coaches. Sometimes when we attend functions such as graduations, we hear these things that we think are just another saying that are meaningless and here is an example of one that was used for years at RHS. Students, shoot for the moon and you'll be sure to land amongst the stars. I will never forget coming home from a graduation and I called my sister and I said, isn't this silly? We have to listen to all these things over and over again. She was very quick to correct me and I stand corrected. Thank you to my sister. We must hear these things. We must hear about the future, which are our youth. We must pay homage to them and they to us because they are our future. And while these might seem like trite sayings, they are true and it's recommitting every day that we live to the future. And that is what you are. It's a recommitment every single time we hear these things. They're not trite and they're not to be taken lightly. They're very serious. So with that, let me smile and stand up and just talk to you. I see faces out here, I know. So if I call a name or two and I don't get all the names, please forgive me. I see Chance, who's been up here many times. I see Connor Cole, who stood up here many times and on the mat, both of you. And I see students that I currently have, Mr. Dupree and Mr. Hess back there. I see you gentlemen and you really are the future and all of you others that I simply cannot recall your names. Forgive me. That being said, it is our honor to recognize you. Your coach, Mr. Brown, Tom Brown, sent me a list of people, so I'm going to read it and forgive me if I make mistakes with the pronunciation. So here we go. And a list of accomplishments. So here we go, my friends. Youth wrestlers, second place, Easton Roberts. If you are here, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Is Easton here, Tom?
Baseball's going on too, so we're kind of in.
Okay. Well, that's understandable. These are multi-talented youth. They participate in academics, athletics, all kinds of it, and extracurricular activities outside of the school realm, which makes them truly scholar athletes and community people. Thank you. All right, so second place, Maria Mitchell, girls division. Maria? Maria, thank you. I see you have on your medallion. How cool is that? Love it. All right, now I'll be asking you questions here. Third place, Blake Van Dyke. Blake, are you here? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, fourth place, Marcus Mitchell. Marcus, are you here? Marcus, what a pleasure to see you and you also have on a medallion. Quite honored. Is that for the Olympics? Just say yes. Mr. Curry's just say yes program. All right, fourth place, Bryce Cole. Bryce, where are you? Not here? Well, we commend him for his accomplishments. Sixth place, Peyton Deal. Peyton, oh my goodness gracious, you have a medallion too. You are no doubt a future Olympian. Thank you, sir. All right, sixth place, Colt Wilson. Colt, are you here? Not here. We commend him for his accomplishments. Now varsity wrestlers, and I failed to mention one that I do know. Fifth place, Wyatt Spencer. Wyatt, congratulations to you, Wyatt. Is this at the state? State level? Thank you. Where is this, in Richmond or Salem? Salem. All right, thank you. Fifth place, Kaden Dupree. Kaden, where are you? I saw you come in. Mr. Dupree, you have a family of which to be proud. Your sister is a police officer here. I have your brother in class that I never had the pleasure of having you, but your wrestling accomplishments did not go unnoticed. Congratulations to you. Thank you. And fifth place, Connor Cole. Connor, I've had the pleasure to have Connor in class and I wish him the very best in his graduation. Thank you, Connor, and your accomplishments. And although his name is not on here, I cannot, please stand up, Sean Rose. You have had so many, yes, yes, sir. Chance, I'm sorry. Please leave it to me. Chance, thank you for your accomplishments. Is this the first year you have not placed at the state?
Yeah.
Well, we just going to put that aside by my authority. Thank you. You are a great young man. Thank you to all of you. Next, coaching staff. Thank you. I wish I had that authority, but I really don't. I just take it as how needed. Coaching staff, Frank Dartie, is Coach D here? If you don't know Coach D, he is involved to the nth degree in everything. He deserves much applause. Thank you, Frank. Sean Rose, now, Mr. Rose, it's your time. Thank you, sir, for your endeavors and your dedication to these youth. And you may remain standing, coaches. Eric Phipps, Eric, are you here? Where's Eric? Not here, but we thank him very much. John Brown, John, please stand. Thank you for your work, John, in putting this program together and all the people that even listed to help you. It does not go unnoticed, not just for the council, but in the lives of people far beyond what we're living right now. They'll remember you. Jared Smith, Jared, known Jared forever. Thank you, Jared, for your work. So much appreciated. Ronnie Hess, Ronnie? Thank you, Ronnie. We appreciate you more than you know. Thank you. BG Dai, Mr. Dai, are you here? He is not here, but we appreciate his work. Chris Auburn, Chris, he's not here. Thank him. Brogie Harmon, Brogie, where's Brogie? And then this family forever too. I guess I'm telling my age and my experience, but it's all okay, trust, trust me. Ricky Lamb, Mr. Lamb, thank you. Chad Cole, Chad? Not here, I bet he's at the gym. Thank you. Richard Boyd, Richard?
They're all at the baseball field.
Okay. Well, I'll read them anyway and recognize them. Thank you. Joey Wade, Mr. Wade? Okay. Nathan Roberts, Nathan. All right, Cody Sayers, Cody. And Blake Wilson and Keith Newberry. Did I, I hope I got everybody. A few, you may be seated, gentlemen, just a few things here that I want to make note of for our youth and the program. They deserve our time and our respect and it's mutual. It always comes back to you. It's karma. The way you treat people is the way you'll be treated. Thank you. Wrestlers in the eight and underage division came in fourth place in the entire state of Virginia. This includes every single division in the Commonwealth of over 250 teams. That's an accomplishment. The Richlands Wrestling Club funds, feeds, supplies wrestling gear and trains kids during wrestling season from K through 12. That is a huge span. A special note here, the 2019 wrestling season ended the year with only 14 students. That was in 2019. Here we are in 2023. Today, the wrestling club has well over 100 students from the Richlands area. We are appreciative of the work of these coaches, their families, the people we don't even see who are not here, who support you. We appreciate that. All right, the club would like to thank the community and the donors who believe in the cause. The club now has two wrestling mats and they're able to continue feeding kids while traveling and maintaining the wrestling gear all at the same time. I'd say that's no small feat. Next, a special thanks to the Richlands Town Council for helping them get their start nearly four years ago. Members of council and to prior council, thank you for supporting our youth. And also the club would like to extend thanks, a special thanks to Shay Cook, Mark Singleton, Ramis of Richlands, Silver Spur Conveyors and West River Machinery for continuing to sponsor these students. And all of this leads to personal accomplishments for each and every wrestler and the accomplishments that you have are shared by your families who have supported you. This day is for you, but it is also for all those who support you. We're in it together. Thank you. May I have the wrestlers and the coaches up here for a picture, please? I would suggest one here and then we'll get you back up here. So council, we'll move aside or just sit. Gentlemen, come up here and then we'll get a picture with you and without you. Come on up. Good to see you. What a pleasure and an honor. What a pleasure. Coming up, gentlemen and ladies. Lady wrestlers are relatively new in the world, I guess. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you. Brennan, congratulations to you. Trevor, good to see you, sir. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. The pledge is ours. The pledge is ours. Is somebody out here who can take a picture of this group and then we'll get a picture with the council? We'll stand down for a minute so they can get it with us. And we'll get one with you too. Oh, you've got it. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. I would ask that you could do one and I've got another request. Go ahead, take your pictures, please. Take pictures. I would ask that these wrestlers come up here and be mixed with us. We'll all have a picture together. Please come. Come up here, gentlemen and ladies. Come here. Seniors, get over here. Connor, seniors. Gentlemen, you're fine, you're fine. Oh, you're fine. You're good. We're just trying to get you with us. We'll mix and mingle, okay? We'll huddle up. Come on, gentlemen, you can do this. I got this. Thank you very much. Hey, everybody, thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. Are you a wrestler? What weight class? 500 pounds? I don't doubt it. Good to see you, my friend. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Honor and pleasure is ours. Counsel, I would like, one of the things I forgot to ask, I'll just do it right now. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under unscheduled public comments? Please add Ernest Edgeel to Roman numeral nine. And Ernest Edgeel, anybody else who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments? Okay. Does everyone add Ernest, please? Roman numeral nine. Okay. So we are moving forward. Okay. We have rec commission volunteer of the year board tennis court updates. Okay. Who would like to do that? Tony? Thank you.
Thank you all for having us. Each year we do this volunteer and it seems like it gets harder and harder to pick a volunteer each year, but this year was pretty easy. McKinley here, she's going to be our outstanding volunteer of the year. Some of the things she does, and it's an honor to be here because I know as you've got kids and stuff like that, playing new sports so hard to help your community out other than just doing the coaching and stuff like that. But I witnessed a couple of things. They had the Shirley Hill White Christmas around Christmas time last year. There were thousands of thousands of thousands of dollars that were donated to McKinley and Little Rock last year. And I would say, just a rough guess, there was probably...
Over a thousand at least.
Yeah, there was at least 15, I mean, I thought it was 15 to 2,000 because there was, there was a table full of shoes and stuff like that that they volunteered their time to go get and stuff like that and then prepared. It was beautiful. I mean, you know, the house was decorated. It was just, they had food, you know, food pantries and concession there. So it was just something that's going to continue to get bigger and bigger. Also during the flood last year, I know in Buckhannon County and Tazewell County, McKinley and her husband, you know, they was the first one to say, hey, what do you need us to do? And I'm sure if you guys, you know, seen Facebook or heard, there's, there's nobody in the town that has done more for our community than McKinley and Rock. And I know she's the cog that makes it keeps, keeps going.
I'm behind the scenes.
Because I know Little Rock real well. We grew up playing ball together, so I know it's, it's all her, but... You know, it's, and also, and I know I'm going to miss a bunch because, I mean, each year I think, man, this is the best volunteer that we had. But, I mean, the last two years and especially this year, it just feels like, I don't know how it can be taught because I know nightly that they give out food to our homeless in this community. And, you know, I was speaking to Rock the other day and he said, we do have homeless people in our community.
More than we know.
And more than we know. And I was kind of shocked by it as well. But I know they give out meals every night.
At least 10 or 15 every night. It's slowed down since baseball started, but as long as we can get there by eight, we try to go get them and deliver them.
Yeah. So, you know, like I said, I'm missing a lot of things. I know she, she volunteers to help coach and she's always, you know, around, being seen in her community. But above, above all, you know, she is there for a community and when we need help, it seems like she is always there. And I think it's important that this year's volunteer and outstanding just don't fit it. She is very, very, very special. And I would just like for everybody to give her a hand, actually a standing hand because it's truly amazing what, what she does. It's truly amazing. But I present this award, McKinley McHill, so very, very, but you want this on it?
Uh, no, you take it off. We have to take a picture of us.
Yeah. Well deserved. Thank you for everything you do.
Thanks, everybody. And it takes a community for us to be able to do it. And I say us because it's me and Rocky both. We're a team. Whatever I do, he does, whatever he does, I do. So honestly, it's a team effort.
McKinley, thank you. Let the record reflect her name, please, that she did receive the award. And then we'll get a picture with you too. Come on, McKinley. Okay. Yeah, let's come up with this. Come on over here. Tony, come on over.
You're my teammate, so you need to up here too.
No, this is about my wife.
Here, McKinley, come on over. Good to see you.
Good to see you. How are you doing, Ron?
Very good. Come on over, okay? Tony, come on over, my friend. You need to, just front and center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well deserved.
Also, just a couple of other things. I know since the ARPA money didn't, I think that there were some things we just couldn't, you know, get that we asked for. I know that the tennis courts was one of them and I was going to ask the council before you all decided to do anything with that. You know, like I said, in January, you all just said that, you know, we probably, you couldn't probably give us that kind of money. But, you know, I, the council and I, or the committee and I is looking at, trying to do some fundraisers slash getting donations or whatever is possible to try to redo that. To redo, you know, as in the tennis courts, make it a pickleball court, just whatever we can. So I would just ask the council to, instead of making any immediate decision on that, to give us, you know, six to eight months to 10 months or something. And if we don't raise the money, then pursue whatever thoughts you all have for that. But until then, you know, let us try to raise money and stuff like that, you know, to have it redone. So.
Thank you, Tony.
One last thing. Oh, let me think, what was it? Uh, hang on. There was something else. Tennis courts and also the slide. I was just wondering about the slide, if that was still going to happen. I know a lot of times, once you do away with something, you don't get it back. So I just want to remind the council about the slides. We did take the slides out and I appreciate what you all have done so far. I really appreciate that, you know, the trees being cut down and the work over there. Thank you for that. But also with the slide, you know, I was just wondering, you know, if that's still going to be a possibility. But also with the slide, you know, I was just wondering, um, you know, if that's still gonna be a possibility. You know, the slide that we presented you all, if, if that was still gonna be an option. You don't have to answer, but I probably gonna come back and bug you all until, um, cause the kids deserve something.
Tony, I, I don't have an answer for you either. But I think those things are yet to be determined.
Okay.
Thank you.
Like I said, once we get rid of something, it's gone, so I encourage you all to, to, you know, at least try to give back something. And if the town's willing to, uh, give any money toward the tennis courts or anything like that, I think it's only fair. But if you can't, I understand it's all been about grants and stuff like that anyway. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Tony. And congratulations again, McKinley. Okay, uh, we're on Roman numeral five C, authorization to pay the bills. Uh, in your packet were, uh, check registers, two of them. So we have them before us. Are there any questions here on the check registers regarding the registers before we authorize the manager to pay the bills? Any questions on the check register? There's two.
I think the addition of the electric, we wanna thank Town Hall and Ron for adding that to the register. So it gives a clear picture of how the electric system's doing.
Does anybody see that on, on the bottom of the page? Okay. Any other, uh, questions here, members of council? Usually there are questions, I wanna make sure. Okay. Okay. There being, uh, no questions here, is there a motion to authorize the manager to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Laura makes the motion. Is there a second? Gary? Gary makes the second. We, is there any further discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, uh, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Now we're on Roman numeral five D minutes. We have before us minutes for the regular meeting of March the fourteenth, special called meetings at February twenty-eighth, March seventh, March twenty-first, March twenty-third, and an emergency meeting on March the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I hope you've had a, a minute or two to look over these. Susan emailed some of them to us for, uh, quick access. Before you do anything, I wanna say thank you, Susan, for taking, undertaking a daunting task. Thank you. Uh, are there any questions, uh, about the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Rick makes a motion to, uh, accept all of them as submitted?
One, yeah.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to accept all these minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary? Rick? Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We're now on Roman numeral six, agenda items. Uh, we have A, police department code enforcement changes request an emergency vote. And before you, uh, I'm gonna check with, uh, Ron and Mike. Is this what we're discussing right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So what you have before you is, uh, we, we really wanna, you know, show a real emphasis on code enforcement issues, uh, coming up this spring. And the reason we're asking for an emergency vote is because we've already has grass that's starting to get particularly long in some areas. I'm gonna kind of kick it over to Mike and let him explain to you exactly, um, what it is we're requesting. But in, in the red, in the red writing, you, that's what we suggest from a code enforcement standpoint, from the police department, for, uh, the timeframes and fines.
Okay.
So in two thousand and twenty-one, there was some changes made to the code, basically involving nuisances. That's chapter ninety-two is nuisances of the Richland Sound Code. And in certain sections, like in ninety-two point oh-two A, the town has to give reasonable notice to somebody if they have trash in their yard, uh, that could pose a danger to the public. So instead of the town just going in, going in and cleaning it up, um, you have to provide notice to the landowner. Um, and under the current code, it just says after reasonable notice. There's also, um, section F of that same section is, they say reasonable notice. They define how to give reasonable notice, not what the time period is.
And the section, what was it, Mike, F? Did you say?
Yeah, ninety-two oh-two F.
Okay.
Uh, defines reasonable notice as delivering to the owner of the property or placing on their front door. Uh, that doesn't give a certain amount of time for them to clean up their yard. So it, and it looks like, I think Ron has made his suggestion, um, of fourteen days. That should be reasonable enough for somebody who gets a notice on their door to clean up their yard. But that is something that council has to adopt before code enforcement can go in and say, you've done something wrong. Once again, the town can't just send the town crew to go in there and clean it up and then charge them. They have to give them reasonable notice. So, um, council will need to define how, how much time is reasonable notice? And I think the suggestion was fourteen days. So this does not change the code. We don't have to read the ordinance. We don't have to do anything like that. We're not changing the ordinance at all. We're just defining it, putting it in the minutes of what reasonable notice is defined, how much time by the council. And that's a, essentially the same thing on, um, grass removal as well. Um, you know, somebody may not know that their grass is too high. So the town's gotta provide them notice saying, hey, your grass is too high, you need to cut it. Um, and then how much rea, how much time is reasonable for them to go in and cut their, cut their grass? That's what the council needs to define as well.
Mike, is this ninety-two point zero-two B?
That is. Yes. And then there's also a necessity under ninety-two oh-three, which is removal of dangerous structures. Need to give reasonable notice, reasonable time to do that. So the council will need to prescribe what the penalty would be for a violation of this code section. Under state code, it cannot exceed a thousand dollars. So anything under a thousand dollars is what the council could decide. Of course, that's something different, that's removal, repair of buildings.
I was thinking, if it already has the thirty days built in that, so all we were asking for was for council to determine the fine.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, that one has the, um, they have thirty days to be able to fix that. So now it's just, under that code section, you just need to define what the, what the penalty should be. Once again, that cannot exceed a thousand dollars. You can do it as a thousand dollars, but it can't exceed a thousand dollars. Um, and then ninety-two oh-four, that's inoperable vehicles. The way it's drafted right now, uh, makes it a zoning, it's treated as a zoning violation. There is a different code, a different way to define the penalty for that. Um, and we can change that one. I'm not ready to change that one today. I have not provided a, a new change for the ordinance that needs to be read. And that's if council decides they wanna go that route. But right now, it's, it's punished as, um, a zoning violation, but it can be as a first violation would not exceed two hundred dollars and any subsequent violation cannot exceed five hundred. So if you want me to change that ordinance, we can do that. But we're, we're not ready to do that one today. And I know that, uh, Ron has made a suggestion as to how to move forward with that.
Yeah, I, I think we can work from the PD standpoint. We can work with the zoning administrator, um, jointly on this, if council would just be inclined to set the penalties. I don't think there's a real need. I mean, if we run into any issues related to enforcement of it, we could always come back and ask you to change the actual ordinance. But I'd like it, at least at the first, initially, to work with the zoning administrator.
Who is the manager?
Now, for right now. Yes.
Just to be clear.
Yes.
For those who don't know. Okay, thank you.
I have a question about, um, ninety-two point oh-two, oh-two B. You don't have to provide a, uh, written notice every time the grass gets big, just once in the season, right?
That is correct.
So I had a quick question. I presume these are just excerpts of these ordinances or whatever. Uh, is there a defined height for grass? Like, and who makes that call? That's my concern. I realize that has to be sort of open-ended, but at the same time, like, that concerns, because what's tall?
Right.
Yeah.
We, we know that that's subjective, so we said we wanna use a standard, a fair standard across the board. I think what we're gonna do is a twelve inches, just put a roller in the car.
Yeah, that's fair.
And set the roller down, if it's above twelve inches, then, then, uh, at that point is when we can step in. So that would just be the standard that we would apply across the board.
Well, and that same code section, ninety-two, ninety-two point oh-one defines nuisances and that actually includes the accumulation of weeds of grass over twelve inches in height.
Perfect, so it's written.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
But again, we're not just gonna eye that. We're
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
We're gonna have a standard that's, we're gonna apply for everything. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, uh, from council, uh, for Ron or Mike regarding these proposed changes? Gentlemen, would you like, uh, council to vote on what you're suggesting, uh, reasonable for the ninety-two point oh-two A and ninety-two point oh-two B to accept the suggestions?
As well as ninety-two point zero-three, oh-four.
We're waiting on oh-four, isn't that right? Oper, inoperable vehicle.
No, if you wanna go ahead and move forward with the way it's currently written, well, all, all we need is a vote for to set the fine, the first violation of two hundred and subsequent violations set at five hundred.
So you've already got the process, you've all?
Yeah, what you see in red is what we're, we're suggesting, uh, Mr. Wood.
Well, as the current, as it's written, it's not adopted in the code. It's just, council needs to define that. So it's not gonna amend the code at all. It's, you all can change it next month if you wanted to, but you needed to
Is it defining the code?
Have some kind of definition.
Defining it more clearly?
It's just saying as the, so the current code right now, as to, um, removal of trash, says that whenever the designated town official deems it necessary, after reasonable notice, have such trash, garbage, refuse, litter, litter and others like substances which might endanger the health. And also later on with grass, after reasonable notice as determined by the locality. So if you all just have it in your minutes of what reasonable notice is, then you're covered.
Do you want me to make a motion to accept these?
I, I would say, read what's in red, so that's in the minutes.
Are we good with these?
Put that in a motion if that's what council is wanting to do.
Or, like, I guess it's more of a question for council as a whole. Are we good with, like, these penalties? A thousand does seem steep to me, but other than that, like, I haven't, I don't see anything else crazy, but a thousand does seem a lot. I don't wanna, like, run people off. It's my concern. But safety too.
Let me talk on that move.
Please, please.
If we have to go in and tear a building down, a thousand dollars ain't nothing.
I agree.
If you have to move the whole construction crew in there.
Yeah.
And that, that would be all we would get allocated. And then we could turn around, probably, then put the roof against the property. But a thousand dollars, if you're Town Hall building, they could.
So we like, so dangerous structure can even, what, like, that can be defined? How open-ended is that? Can it be an abandoned house?
It would have to be.
Or we're talking tool sheds? That's where I'm trying to.
Well, it could be from a tool shed to a house.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's dangerous to go in, if it's male or male, I mean, it would fall under.
Again, it's one of those that, it's left open to interpretation. And it, it, it just basically says that it's a danger to public safety. And I'll say this, you know, there, there's a lot of codes that we enforce as police officers where there's a lot of discretion that you can use as a law enforcement officer. Obviously, you know, we're gonna try to be diplomatic at first and try to help folks out. Um, and, and, and each individual case could change. I mean, you, you know, you could talk to somebody who's, you know, disabled or, or not able-bodied for, for some reason. Obviously, we would try to work with that person a little bit more versus somebody who just w- was neglectful and didn't care. So, um, again, there's a lot of discretion built into most of the codes that we enforce that are misdemeanors, if that makes sense.
Okay. Is it, is there a cap perhaps? Cause I don't like, it says monthly, right? So if somebody, I mean, this could pile up quick.
Right.
The six grand, is there a cap on? Cause if you can't pay three grand, you're not gonna pay us ten. That's my
I don't know that there's a cap, but, but you did touch on, if, if we, uh, if we place a lien on the property after, you know, a certain amount of time, if those fines haven't been paid, obviously, we're gonna try to take possession of that property and probably auction it off at a later date to recoup our costs.
Okay.
Um, I would say that most of the properties that we have in town now that are in just severe disrepair, folks probably aren't paying taxes on them.
That's
You know, and, and, and I'm assuming that, I, I would say that the taxes probably haven't been paid in quite some time.
Yeah.
You know, there, there are some properties that are in significant, uh, you know, states of disrepair right now.
Well, I'm like, uh, Rick there, you know, the cost. We're talking about the max a thousand dollars. I mean, if, if, for instance, we tear down a house, it's gonna be expensive. Eight, ten, who knows how much. Couldn't you just put that cost on the lien on the property?
This is gonna be an additional, like, fine. So is, the cost is still gonna be, um, town will have a lien against the property. But as far as what's a fine to them, that's gonna be on top of
Okay. The fine?
Yes.
Okay. For our cost.
Well, it's gonna be on top of, what this penalty is, is on top of, you know, how much
It takes
You know, if it takes ten thousand to tear it down, you're gonna get a ten thousand dollar lien and then a thousand dollar
Okay.
Penalty.
Okay, any other questions from council? Rick, did you make a motion? He wants you to read the red
Yeah, but
It's not red.
Mayor, if it helps, I can read the suggestion and, and then
Yes, that'd be fun.
So for ninety-two point zero-two A, removal of trash, refuse, garbage, litter, the reasonable notice given that, that we're requesting is fourteen days. That's the recommended language, fourteen days. For ninety-two point zero-two B, cutting grass, weeds and other foreign growth, uh, we're requesting that reasonable notice, uh, be seven days, with the first offense being fifty dollars, second offense being one hundred dollars, and the third offense being two hundred dollars. Uh, for ninety-two point zero-three, removal, repair, et cetera, buildings and other structures, um, we're asking for the penalty for failure to comply, first hundred for the first, five hundred for the first offense, one thousand for second or subsequent. For two-two-zero-nine of the Code of Virginia, uh, suggestion, council amend the language as underlined as, as above as two hundred dollars for the first violation, subsequent violation set at five hundred dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, is there a motion to accept the changes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Rick makes the motion. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Laura makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? You guys with us, making sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, there being no discussion, uh, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries, I think it was five to one, is that correct? Okay. Five yes, one nay. Uh, so the motion carries and, uh...
Mayor Curry?
Yes.
Um, may I just touch on that just for one quick second? Um, I've had an overwhelming amount of citizens contact me about code enforcement. And I just wanna be clear to the people that what just happened gives the police department more authority to, um, do code enforcement. So to the people who have reached out to me, that's what, part of what we've been waiting on.
Okay, thank you. I would ask too, that, Mike, as soon as this has been entered into the code section, can you provide us a copy of the changed thing? Some of us have these things and some of us don't?
Well, once again, the code's not gonna change. Code is not changing at all. The, the wording of the code is not changing.
Oh, okay.
We would've had to read that word for word. This is, we're keeping it the same way. It's still defined as reasonable notice, but we're gonna have in the minutes that you all have defined what reasonable notice is here today.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So we've defined the variable. That's essentially what's happening.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we felt it was important because we wanted, like you said, standard And we thought it was important because we wanted, like you said, standardized it, treat everybody the same. Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so we are now on healthcare contract. Heather Perry, Heather isn't here. Ron, would you like to take that up, please? Susan, okay. Susan, thank you.
This is just our annual healthcare renewal, and it's my understanding that nothing has changed. So I'll read this resolution. It's R two oh two-three zero four eleven. The local choice health benefits program provides health insurance benefits to our employees and their dependents, excludes elected officials. Be hereby resolved that this eleventh day of April twenty twenty-three, the town of Richlands does approve that coverage will be renewed and extended to be effective on July first twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, are there any questions? Is there a motion to accept the resolution as read by Susan?
I'll make that motion.
Laura makes the motion to adopt resolution R twenty twenty-three zero four-one-one. Is there a second to this motion?
Not a second.
And Dan makes the second. Is there any discussion to this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. I would ask that my name be corrected to be C U R Y. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next. Okay, next we are on Roman numeral seven, executive session. Before we ask for motions, theft for this, I would ask, since we're going to be here for a little while, would it be easier for counsel and for our audience, for the audience, which is not large, to be in the hall and we can meet in here? Is counsel amenable to that? So that room gets hot. All right, so that being understood, we'll make the motion, and then we'll ask members of our, are those present to please stay in the hallway until we finish our business. Thank you very much for your understanding. All right, so we have several executive sessions coming up, and I'm going to try to read these so that we cover all of them in one motion. All right, so we will be going into executive closed session pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A six, contract negotiations, water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant upgrades. I'll say we would be going into executive closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A six, contract negotiations, power cost projection twenty twenty-four, Zoom meeting with Alice Wolf of Blue Ridge Power, executive session, Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one personnel, town manager position. Roman numeral seven D, executive session pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one personnel, board appointments. These will include perhaps planning commission, reg commission, IDA at all. Next. Events committee. Okay, thank you. We'll add that, please. And I will add at all, as for the Latin and others, thank you, because I didn't know what all they were. Thank you. All right, and here we go. Executive session, contract negotiations pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A six, rugs and cleaning contract. Executive session, Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A seven, pending litigation, opioid litigation. Executive session, contract negotiations pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A six, fire and rescue agreement. Executive session, contract negotiations pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A six, mowing contract. So I hope I covered those adequately. Is there a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the various Virginia Code sections that I have read?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion, yes.
Are we gonna be in there quite a while? I was wondering, should we move schedule public comments before or?
We, Doug? We would have, we voted on it earlier not to change the amendment, not to accept the
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
All right, I mean, as it is, are you okay with that?
Oh, I'm okay. I just
I follow the reasoning, but
I'm just worried about the people that
Yeah, I, I get it. I appreciate that, Doug. All right, so thank you very much. The point is well-taken and appreciated. Okay, so Laura, you made the motion. Is there a second? Rick seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this motion to go into executive session, closed session? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura? Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. So we're now in executive session. Thank you, members in the council room. Yeah, there should be. If not, we'll get them some. Yes, yes, absolutely. Frank, he's asking if we have
Mayor, I've got the Zoom running in there already, so I might have to move it back in here.
Okay. We'll leave some of these out.
I'm thinking eleven. Could be twelve.
There's really a lot, you know.
Lot to this.
Your agenda's always this big. In normal, you've been here long enough to, are they getting larger or, you know, I mean?
Same about the same, that's all, yeah.
You know, there's a times.
Yeah, it probably goes a little quicker because it's not as much bigger. Congratulations, what's her name, Amanda?
Amanda.
Congra, yeah, congratulations. We're, we're glad to have you. Doug Wright, love him, that's Gary Jackson.
Gary Jackson.
You from Grundy? Okay. Okay, it's for your time, but I lived in Grundy quite a while, and do you remember the prime time video in movie gallery? That's before your time.
I remember old Grundy.
Okay.
How it used to be.
Yeah, okay, we, we had a movie store before your time, and where they rented videos. And right beside Jerry's, remember Jerry's Mart, that's probably
Jerry's ever by the
Yeah, post office, yeah.
I remember the old record shop that used to be there.
Okay, yeah, that was, yeah, I remember that. Okay, we were straight over from the courthouse, I mean, not courthouse, but straight over the post office across the street, and they've torn it down, I guess. And there was a convenience store, and then we had a movie store, and everybody come in to rent movies. Yeah. Yeah. I'm telling how old I am, but
No, I remember old Grundy. I remember the record store. It was like, we probably won this year, so I remember a lot.
Okay, yeah.
I just got to meet you all.
It's good, thank you. Someone hurrying, I haven't seen it in forty years.
You don't even know if it's still there, do you?
I know it's beside the bank.
Really?
Yeah, I never
Does it, does it get flooded or anything?
Yeah, I forgot about, I had a video store fifteen, twenty years ago. And he had to chop a hole in the roof and climb up.
I remember that, I remember that. I was actually, you know, right at the time, yeah. I'm a little long in bathroom work.
Yeah, he came, probably
I'm working for you at that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And it came so quick. He said a guy had a six-pack of beer holding onto a tree, and the guy wouldn't turn loose of the beer.
To hold, to save his life.
And he drowned.
Yeah. Little bouncy ship, right?
Yeah, he took that beer and left. Amazing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dad's very good with games. These little six-pack of liquor bottles, setting, pumping, and the little bottles, full pack, it was all full, still here, sitting on somebody's grave. You saw it, I had some wonder somebody ain't stole it, babe. And I said, wow.
We know what he Yeah, we know what he did when he was
He liked selling perfect.
Yeah. Well, sure.
Mayor, would you like them to bring food in now? We have food, we have sandwiches.
Absolutely.
Gosh.
Alice, can you hear us?
Who brought food? We have one more.
Can you hear us?
We can, we can hear you.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm so sorry you're not here. We're gonna have food, and we don't need to be rude, Alice and others, but food is important.
Yes, yes, it is.
So Mayor, do you want to start off with, I think we have one before this, but we already got them online, and start off with
Sure, we should, uh, since they're here. Okay, we are, uh, ladies and gentlemen, everybody present, all right, I'll be, okay, I'll wait for Frank.
[inaudible]
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Motion carries. what was properly disclosed in code sections 2.2-3711A6, 2.2-3711A1, and 2.2-3711A7. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Laura makes a second. By voting, you are certifying that nothing was discussed other than properly appointed by these code sections. Roll call vote, please.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. We're now back into open session. I would declare a 10-minute recess. Thank you. This meeting of the Rich Lands Town Council is back in session. We have been in executive session. Is there any action that council would like to take following our executive session?
I would like to make a motion that we give direction to the town manager to sign the letter regarding the water treatment plant upgrades.
The mayor.
The mayor.
Here we go.
And I guess town manager's going to, so whoever's going to sign.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Rick makes the second. Laura makes the motion. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, council.
I would like to make a motion for the resolution R-2023041. Should be signed by the mayor.
That resolution will need to be read, and then ask for approval on that.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, if you want to do that now, or you can do it under my comments, whichever one.
Why don't you go ahead now and be done with it, okay? All right, so here we have Resolution R. 2023-0401. A resolution of the Town of Richlands and Richlands Town Council approving of the town's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against TIVA, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directing the town's attorney and/or the town manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the town's participation in the settlements. Whereas, the opioid epidemic that has caused thousands of human lives across the country also impacts the Town of Richlands by adversely impacting the delivery of emergency medical, law enforcement, criminal justice, mental health, and substance abuse services, and other services by the Town of Richlands' various departments and agencies. Whereas, the Town of Richlands has been required, and will continue to be required, to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff energy, and time to address the damage the opioid epidemic has caused, and continues to cause, the citizens of the Town of Richlands. And, whereas, the Town of Richlands has filed suit against TIVA, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and certain of their related corporate entities for their role in the distribution, manufacture, and sale of the pharmaceutical opioid products that have fueled the opioid epidemic that has harmed the Town of Richlands. And, whereas, the Town of Richlands' suit seeks recovery of the public funds previously expended, and to be expended in the future, to abate the consequences and harms of the opioid epidemic. And, whereas, settlement proposals have been negotiated that will cause TIVA, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS to pay billions of dollars nationwide to resolve opioid-related claims against them. And, whereas, the Town of Richlands has approved and adopted the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, the Virginia MOU, and affirms that these pending settlements with TIVA, Allergan, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens shall be considered settlements that are subject to the Virginia MOU, and shall be administered and allocated in the same manner as the opioid settlements entered into previously with the distributions distributors, and Janson. And, whereas, the Town of Richlands Outside Opioid Litigation Council has recommended that the town participate in settlements in order to recover its share of the funds that the settlement will provide. And, whereas, the town attorney has reviewed the available information about the proposed settlements, and concurs with the recommendation of outside council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Richlands Town Council, this 11th day of April 2023, approves the Town of Richlands' participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against TIVA, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directs the town attorney and/or the town manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the Town of Richlands' participation in the settlements, including the required release of claims against settling entities. Rick, do you want to make a motion that we adopt this?
After the punctuations are fixed.
Yes, I circled them.
After the punctuations, I'll make a motion that we adopt this.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There, Laura makes the second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
And I would entertain a motion to identify Mike Thomas as the contact person for this settlement.
So moved.
The motion is on the floor, is there a second?
I'll say it.
There is a second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for helping to clear up this situation, and we hope that, despite all the language and everything else, that we can be of help to our citizens.
Mayor Curry?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Joe Ball and Amber Artrip to the Events Committee.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to appoint Joe Ball and Amber Artrip to the Events Committee. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
Jan makes the second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries, it is unanimous. Thank you to both Joe and Amber for participating. Is there any other action from executive session?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to appoint Dylan Smith to the Richlands Industrial Development Authority.
I'll say it.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, made by Jordan, to appoint Dylan Smith to the IDA. Rick has the second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Who is Dylan Smith?
Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries, it is unanimous. Is there any other action from the executive session, council?
I would like to make a motion that we award the mowing bid to Elite Lawn Care.
Okay, we have a motion to award the bid for mowing to Elite Lawn Care, is there a second?
Yes, I'll say it.
And Rick makes the second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries, it is unanimous. Ron, thank you. Is there any other action from executive session?
I would, sorry. Do we need the motion for the contract?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we direct the town manager and the mayor to sign the fire and rescue agreement.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to have the town manager and myself to sign the agreement with fire and rescue. And, is there a second? Gary makes the second. Is there any discussion? The meeting, no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you, council. Is there any other action from executive session? There being no other action, we will move forward, thank you. Okay, we're now on Roman numer eight, scheduled public comments. We had no one here who wanted to be in the scheduled public comments? Unscheduled public comments, we had Ernest Sedgeall, and he's going to speak with Ron tomorrow, is that right, Ron? Okay, so Ernest, we hope you're listening, and you'll have way more than three minutes to share your thoughts, thank you. Our attorney comments, okay, Mike?
That's what I had, was the opioid litigation, just for the board's knowledge, I did forward an easement to Ron for the Cox property. Not sure if you've had any contact, or do you know anything? Okay, I think we have an easement ready to go, so.
Poor Cornelia Cox, thank you.
If you'll remind, so you do have it ready to go?
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Mike? Thank you, sir. Town manager report, okay, Ron?
I think the first thing I have is, I just want to give you an update on our contract with forensic accountants, UHY advisors, this is going to be for our forensic audit. I had an initial meeting with our team that's going to be conducting that audit last week. We got acquainted with one another, they asked for some preliminary documents, we're in the process of getting all that together and delivering those documents to them soon. The one thing I did ask is that we put off on-the-ground folks coming from UHY here until we finish with our budget work sessions, because it's just, it would be too much with, you know, for staff at that point, to try to do both, you know, to try to get a budget together, work with council, develop that, and then try to provide these financial documents. They were agreeable to that, we don't foresee any issues with that moving forward. I did go ahead and reserve a table for the Chamber Annual Membership Dinner. There's several board members that have confirmed that they'll be there, so again, just want to remind you that that's going to be on...
The 21st, I think, isn't it?
Yes, sir, the 21st, that's going to be at the Appalachian Arts and Event Center at 6:00 PM. Reception dinner starts at 6:30.
Ron, who has, who, I know I've indicated yes, but who on council has indicated on that?
I believe Jan, Laura, Gary, and I think that's all I've heard. Jordan, are you going to be there?
Yes.
Okay, and Jordan.
This is the chamber dinner?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just making sure. All right, go ahead, Ron.
And then finally, I have a copy of our proposed fiscal year '23-'24 budget. I'm going to give that to council, if you'll just sit down the line there, sir. I didn't really want to engage in a lot of questions tonight, because we're going to have a meeting that I'm going to ask you to schedule a budget work session on the 20th, at whatever time that council would be able to meet. I can kind of give you just a brief overview of how we put it together for you. When you look at your packet, you'll see that we broke it down into different sections, first being, you know, projected revenue, projected expenses, the budget for each individual department, and I did include at the very end, capital requests, which are currently unfunded in the current budget, and then a ARPA breakdown of some suggestions that we're making, and what that, your ARPA funds would look like after you approve those suggestions, if you choose to do so. When you look through the requests that our various department heads have made for the unfunded capital request, I did put the pressing issues in red, and these are things that, in our opinion, can't wait, there are few, most, most things can wait a little while. So as you look at it, just understand that those in red are pressing issues. Just some highlights from the budget, you know, our revenue from, from last year is up, which is good news. You know, we, we cut overall expenses and spending. What you're presented with is what I call a skinny budget, there is no room, there's no fat left in this thing. You know, ARPA, we're going to, you know, propose to you that ARPA will be used to correct the VDOT deficit, and with VDOT money moving forward, only used to fund VDOT-approved projects and paving. The, the budget that we presented you includes a 3% cost of living adjustment for our employees, and last but not least, there is no transfers from our utilities to plug holes in our operational budget, which I think is good news. The best news I think you could take from what we presented to you is, we're paying the bills with revenue that we're bringing in, and that's important for our town.
Good news.
So, again, I'm not really prepared to take a lot of questions tonight on it, if you would just please take it home, look it over. If you have questions, you all know that you can contact me anytime through email, phone call, if you want to have a meeting, come into the office before the work session, if you have questions. But I would like to ask that we set a work session for the 20th, if that was okay with council, if everybody's schedule worked out at a time that would be convenient for you.
I, I'm good on the 20th. I have an appointment at Bristol Regional at 3:00 that afternoon, to ensure if it's okay with council, can we start this 6:00 instead of 5:30?
Yes.
With 6:00 work on the 20th, depending if it matters to schedule.
The 20th of April.
Depending, maybe the 20th doesn't work for everybody, I don't know.
We have public safety that night, but if we can...
We can rearrange your problem.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good on the 20th.
Jan, will that work for you?
Is it April 20th?
At 6:00, will that work?
Let me get somewhere.
Ted, will that work? Take your time.
Yes, I have nothing on the 20th.
Okay, I'm going to put budget.
I'm sorry, did we set a time for that?
Yes, 6:00. 6:00.
6:00.
It's a budget meeting?
Yes. Budget work session?
Budget workshop.
Thank you, council. So, do you have that down, 6:00 PM on the 20th, for our budget work session? Thank you. Ron, anything else, sir?
No, sir, that's all for me.
Okay. Council member reports, Laura?
I have nothing tonight, I just want to point out that Chief Holt, manager Chief Holt, has been super easy to work with, and anything I've needed has been addressed. So for the first time ever, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Laura. Jan?
I do have a couple of things that came up today, and one was the drain at Dale Road, off of Kent's Ridge, where the monks lived, the drain is stopped up, and she said every time it rains heavy, it backs up in their yard.
You said it was Dale Road?
And the next item I have is, one night we discussed the 30-foot rule for people building things, and I had a lady come to me today, and she was wanting a carport put over top of her driveway, and she said, she was told because she lived on a corner lot, that she couldn't do that, because she wasn't 30 feet from the road. And I said, well, you probably will have to go back and reapply for that, but what did, did we make any decision on that?
We didn't.
Michael was supposed to give us something on that.
Yeah, that's something that, we're in a tough time, you know, Ron's wearing a bunch of hats here.
Yeah.
So.
If he's going to have to go through with zoning, and I, I don't know if Ron's prepared to do that, I mean, that, that request would be, have, have to be made to the zoning administrator. And then, that's why we have the BZA over the board of zoning appeals, to where if the zoning administrator denied her putting a carport up, then maybe the BZA could come in, have a hearing in front of there.
That ain't really what we want to do. What we really want to do is match, or the same thing the state's doing. I mean, there are five foots offset. So what I'd like to see happen, is you and Gary get together and come up with them, and let's get this thing changed, where we can let people use the property, instead of us taking it away from them.
Yeah, I don't mind working with you.
She had applied maybe a year and a half ago, when she had a contractor there building, and I told her, I said, well, things may have changed, I don't know, you will probably need to reapply.
Would you just email me her contact information, and we can go from there? I don't mind working with the town attorney and Gary on, you know, the, the changes to the zoning. I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I can jump into it and look at it, it's not a problem, thank you.
What we're, what we're talking about, Ron, is, we have a 30-foot setback. The law in the state is five foot. And it's, if my house burns down, I can't build it back, because it's too close to the street. At the time I moved it back, it would be in the swimming pool, so it's not going to work. We're just wanting people to be able to use the lots that we have in this town. We don't have no more land, and if we don't move that in, we're, we're making ourselves struggling for no reason.
And I do want to let council know, I think I said this last, that, that's going to be a huge undertaking, because we're going to have to change all the zoning. It isn't, I, I'm just going to be forward with you, there, there's no way that I'm going to be able to come in in May and have a whole new, you know, zoning for you. This is going to be something that's going to take some time to look into.
I certainly don't mind to get the ball rolling on it, though. So I'll, I'll work with Michael, and I will talk with Gary, and sit down and come up with a plan on how we present, and at least the initial steps to that process, to the planning commission, we can do that.
We'll start by looking at the areas that are hindering growth, you know, setbacks and some of those items which Rick is talking about, you know, for buildings and structures.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Jan?
No, that's all my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Jordan?
Sure, so I also don't have a lot tonight. Number one on my list, I wanted to follow up about Michael Yates' culvert pipe. Have you had a chance to do anything in regards to that? So when I looked up his name, there was multiple properties that he had owned. Okay. And I, I'm thinking I can basically use the, the Cox easement that I had done, and just kind of transfer it over, I just got to make sure I have the right property. I will speak to you as soon as this meeting's over, make sure that's correct. Okay. Awesome, and then, after that, quick IDA update, we'd like to thank the VCC and SBA for coming out and speaking at the last meeting. We're going to attempt to get business owners together to learn about funding for their business. They offered to come back, and we thought that was very nice of them, so the IDA is going to work on that. Rec Commission update, building repairs are underway, under the way, and wanted to say thank you to our town workers, for their quick work, it looks fantastic over there, it's really shaping up. Full season's coming, so I'm so happy. fantastic over there, it's really shaping up, whole season's coming, so, I'm so happy this is getting done, um, Little League is also underway, um, so go support your youth there, seem to be having tons of fun every time we leave here, you can hear them as soon as you walk out the doors, um, Red Oak Trading is opening this Friday, I think, April 14th, I think this is this Friday, just wanted to give them a shout out, um, go support your local businesses, and then, um, I did some research into the green space grant in regards to staging the train, I don't have anything concrete to report back right now, but I have been knowledge gathering on that topic to try to help us out, get that grant closed down, no promises, but I have started my deep dive, and thank you for the town manager for helping me with that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you Jordan, anything else? Rick?
I don't have much tonight, but I'd like to thank the town council here that we have tonight for working all the problems that we're having, I mean, I see that we're moving, I'd like to thank the town manager, he's put a lot of effort in it, the town attorney, I'd like to thank him for what he's doing, other than that, I don't have nothing else.
Thank you Rick, Gary?
I only have a couple of things, uh, yeah, first, I'm like Rick and Laura, I want to thank, uh, Ron for being so productive in providing all this information, holding down two administrative positions and, you know, thank you, and let's, like, thank the street department for working on the rec park over there, taking care of those serious issues that we had over there, and another thing I have from the planning commission is they're requesting a joint public hearing with council at our next scheduled meeting, which will be May the 9th, to consider the request from Elisa Moss, his company is A&amp;O Properties for a conditional use permit concerning the killing trailer park she purchased on Farmer Street, and I handed y'all the packet that she submitted us in the planning commission. And, um, back on the brush, Ron, I got a few calls this week, is the chipper up and running?
Yes, uh, it has issues.
I know, I seen it today, that's why I was asking.
It is up and running, and then I talked with George after we talked last week, and he was supposed to go out and look at that area that you're talking, you're talking, you talked to me about.
You want me to send you, did I give you her name and address?
You did, and I forwarded that to him, so if that hasn't been done, get with me, they've, they've been working really hard lately with the warm weather, uh, so I can remind him, um, what we're going to do is, we're going to go ahead and pick up again what's out there, uh, we, we put, we posted on the social media platforms again and, and put it on our public access that until we get that, uh, boom, I guess boom truck back up, um, we're, we're just asking for folks not to put any new brush out.
Right.
But we are going to make an effort to get that existing, so I'll, I'll make that, if you'll just send me an email on that again, I, I'll remind you.
Okay, because I did call her back yesterday, I think, just to update her, and I told her we was working on it and we would get it soon as we could.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Gary, thank you, uh, can we add to, yes?
If, uh, there's a request for a public hearing, can the council vote on that to set that?
Sure, I was getting ready to ask for that.
I've got a question on that before we go to that.
Okay.
This is, this Lisa Moss thing is a trailer park.
It's an existing trailer park.
Yeah, it's an existing park.
Yeah, they're, they're making substantial upgrades to the park, I sat through that meeting with, with Gary, and, and they're, they're making substantial upgrades, it, it really sounds like they're trying to clean it up.
Okay, so, is there a motion of council, uh, to have a joint public hearing with the planning commission on, at our May meeting, what is it, May 11th?
Night.
May 9th, sorry.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
And there's a second, any discussion on this motion, um, is there a roll, roll call vote, please?
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries, uh, what would you suggest that we, uh, set it for a time of 5:30?
Yes, I would say 5:30, 5:45, whatever council would, would say, but it needs to be advertised as well.
Well, exactly, so we will set, set that time for 5:45, uh, and, uh, that will be on a joint public hearing with the, uh, planning commission of the town council at 5:45 on May the 9th, okay, anything else? Gary, you good? Okay, Doug?
Uh, I don't have anything except I'd like to compliment this council for moving forward, I, I think this is, I've been here 20 years and I've never seen a council work together as this one has, and I'd like to compliment Ron, we've got a great town hall, so, I'm looking forward to the future and I'm really enthusiastic.
Thank you Doug, mayor's comments, um, I don't have very much tonight, uh, I just want to thank everyone for participating in this town and helping as much as we all can, I do have a membership invoice from the Tazewell County Chamber, this is from, uh, the invoice is for 500 for our membership as a council from January the 1st, 2023 to January 1st, 2024, and this would include things like our dinners and all the access that we have, so I would appreciate a motion to, uh, pay this invoice to the Tazewell County Chamber for membership.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to belong to the Tazewell County Chamber of Commerce? This is from Keisha Cole, thank you for your membership, Keisha. Uh, I feel the reluctance, I'll share my thinking, uh, while some we not, might not seem tangible efforts or tangible things sometimes, we all don't always see that, but I think belonging is more important than not, personal opinion, thank you. There's a motion, is there no second for, to join the Chamber of Commerce?
Is this something council always did?
Traditionally, we have. It's up to the council.
And what's it for?
Membership, here it is, membership.
Right, I mean, but, and it provides other things?
Well, we have access to all the things that the Tazewell County Chamber does, and she can advertise for us, she, they traditionally have done a lot of things in the way of reaching out on our behalf for events that we have, for example, if that's the route council wants to go.
I'm going to make a second motion.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor and there is a second, uh, Jordan makes the motion, Gary makes a second, is there any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please, oh yes Doug, you want to say something?
You say, no, I'll say.
You want to say something Laura?
Um, I would ask if you, as the mayor or Councilman Ratliff, you guys have been here the longest, what benefits have you guys found realistically, I mean, I know what they can do, but what benefits have you guys found in paying that money to join the chamber?
First off, uh, when you put the qualifier on it, a value laden word like realistically, it's all of what we individually see, so, uh, I want to say, sometimes belonging to things, it doesn't have a tangible effect, I kept my finger on it, said we got this, 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 but in the times that we have been, uh, we have had access to lots of information that they can supply us, Laura, I can't tell you exactly what, 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 and I don't know that we can do that, but sometimes it's better to belong than not, that's my take on it.
I've been here 20 years and I'm sure they're a good, a great organization, but I haven't seen, I think our budgets needs every penny that we can keep in it, so I can't see spending that money when our budget is, you know, tight, so of course I'm going to vote no.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's kind of my concern, you know, with our budget as tight as it is, I have a problem.
With $500?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else, discussion?
The only thing I'll say is, they've been a joy to work with in terms of grand openings, um, that's how I've interacted with them and it's been a great organization, that's, that's where I'll leave that.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts? Okay, roll call vote, please?
Um, Doug?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
No.
And Laura?
No.
The motion fails 4 to 2, please let the record reflect, thank you. Okay, so, I can't think of anything else that I have this evening, but I want to wish everybody a happy evening, we're out better, earlier than we thought, and that's always a good thing.
Yeah, we're at 12 o'clock.
And so, uh, this meeting will stand adjourned until our regular meeting of May 9th, and we will have a work session at 6:00 PM, uh, on the 20th of April.
I got one other thing, Ron?
Yes, sir.
When did we set the appointment with Sam?
I haven't yet, uh, they're requesting some... So, they are, he's requesting some things from us first, um, I, I've got two or three emails that I have to get back with him on, probably do that tomorrow, uh, should have